Good evening. Uh, let's go ahead and call our December meeting in the Arnold St. School of Education to order. I know we wanted to go into closed session before the six o'clock hour to discuss some personnel issues, so in order to make the most of that time, I'll ask for a motion that we can adjourn into closed session for a few minutes for personnel.
According to the North Carolina general statute, my mic is definitely on, General Statute 143-318.11, I make a motion at the board entering to closed session to discuss a personnel issue and to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. We will adjourn into closed session for the...
Okay.
We'll wait just a few more seconds for our other board member to come into the room with us. Then we'll resume our meeting. I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight, though. I know this is a busy season for everyone and we appreciate everyone's attendance tonight on what has been a really rainy day, but we've got quite a few presentations to make tonight, and we look forward to that and some matters of business to discuss as well. We have been in closed session, so our meeting has already been commenced, so we will not have to open a meeting again. But I will ask, all of us now that we're all here, our tradition is to begin our meetings with a moment of silence and personal meditation, asking each one to bow and a moment of meditation regarding the business we have before us, keeping in mind that the students are our utmost reason for being and that asking for guidance and making decisions that are in the best interest of all our students in our district. So if you will bow with me for a few minutes of silent meditation. Thank you. Let's stand for a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. This is our night to enjoy a Christmas presentation by our retired school personnel. We look forward to this every year and I know in the, I guess fifteen years I've been on the board, they've never let us down. They've always been here with a spectacular performance to get us in the festive holiday mood. So if you will, I'll ask you all to come forward and sing for us.
...... Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in one horse open sleigh. My dear, you ought to go, I thought I'd take a ride. And soon it's getting dry, for see by my side, the horse was lean and light. Misfortune seemed his lot, he got into a drifted fate and really got upset. Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in one horse open sleigh. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in one horse open sleigh. ... And if you ever saw it, you'd say it glows. All of the other reindeer used to let them all in pace. They never let poor Rudolph join in reindeer games. Then one foggy Christmas Eve, Santa came to say, Rudolph with your nose so bright, won't you guide my sleigh tonight? Then all the reindeer loved him, as they shouted out with glee, Rudolph the reindeer's reindeer, he'll tell history.
Okay, now we're going to set the board turner table.
I bet you do.
Do I understand?
Oh, my goodness.
The days of Christmas.
All right, you got song coming up.
Got the best one.
Are you kidding?
I got two here, now, baby.
I can't, I can't even.
Looks like Max is putting in a script or something.
Who doesn't have a card? Costi, do you have a card?
No, I don't.
Give him a card.
He want a five dollar ring.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Oh, you be twelve, I want twelve, I want twelve.
If you do not have a card, raise your hand. That's twelve. I do.
I've heard him say, give Martin twelve.
Martin wants twelve.
Not two of them, I just want twelve pairs.
Right now, hey, you can't, you can't have anything.
He's not working tonight. Okay, let's get, all right, let's get started here. Hey, did I have a card? Get started here.
Look right behind you, Kelly doesn't have a card.
Kelly Mack. Max, tell y'all.
Who doesn't have a card?
Are you kidding? You gotta fool your microphone, man, there you go.
Is that attorney advice?
That's required, mandatory.
You're standing there. We'll tell ya. We'll tell ya. All right, everybody ready?
You don't want me to sing dry.
We're ready. We're ready. Ready.
On the first day of Christmas, my true love gave to me, A partridge in a pear tree. On the second day of Christmas, my true love gave to me,
Two turtle doves.
And a partridge in a pear tree. On the third day of Christmas, my true love gave to me,
Three French hens. Two turtle doves.
And a partridge in a pear tree.
Oh, man, can I do it in Sunday language?
On the fourth day of Christmas, my true love gave to me, Four calling birds.
Three French hens. Two turtle doves.
And a partridge in a pear tree. On the fifth day of Christmas, my true love gave to me,
Five gold rings.
Four calling birds.
Three French hens. Two turtle doves.
And a partridge in a pear tree. On the seventh day of Christmas, my true love gave to me,
Six geese a lane. Five golden rings.
Four calling birds.
Three French hens. Two turtle doves.
And a partridge in a pear tree. On the seventh day of Christmas, my true love gave to me,
Seven swans a-swimming. Six geese a-lane. Five golden rings. Three French hens. Two turtle doves.
And a partridge in a pear tree. On the eighth day of Christmas, my true love gave to me,
Eight maids a-milking. Seven swans a-swimming. Six geese a-lane. Five golden rings.
Calling birds.
Three French hens. Two turtle doves.
I'm embarrassed to be part of this group.
Nine drummers drumming. Five golden rings. Three French hens. Two turtle doves.
And a partridge in a pear tree. On the tenth day of Christmas, my true love gave to me,
Ten pipers piping. Nine drummers drumming.
Eight maids a-milking.
Five golden rings. Three French hens. Two turtle doves.
And a partridge in a pear tree.
You're not getting a bit, are you?
I'm not getting a bit.
No, no, no.
Nine drummers drumming. Eight maids a-milking. Seven swans a-swimming. Five golden rings. Five golden rings.
Four calling birds.
Three French hens. Two turtle doves.
And a partridge in a pear tree. On the twelfth day of Christmas, my true love gave to me Twelve lords a-leaping.
Eight ladies dancing.
Eleven.
Pipers piping.
Nine drummers drumming.
Eight maids a-milking.
Okay.
Three French hens. Two turtle doves.
We would like to pay them for working. This is their pay for tonight. And I guess this will be the last time we'll be asked to sing. It might be a good thing.
Let me ask, just to be sure, just to be sure.
Yeah, there you go.
You do need an invitation before you come, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I think Anna had the hard job, hardest job, because she had to go after Martin.
And night, holy night! All is calm, all is bright. Now we are perched, mother and child, holy in the soul tender and mild. Sleep in heavenly peace. Sleep in heavenly peace. High and night, holy night! What a star, dim and bright! With the angels, let us sing. Alleluia, to our King! Christ the Savior is born! Christ the Savior is born! To you, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year!
Again, thank you all. Yes, ma'am. I hope the ham's been a great treat. Thank you, and congratulations on that good news. And we appreciate, again, the group coming and sharing with us tonight. We know that you all have a busy schedule and a busy year, and we appreciate your coming back and sharing time with us.
Brady, was this better than Santa Claus?
Absolutely, pal. We hit a home run tonight.
Mr. Chairman, you probably don't know, but our esteemed attorney over there, he got to sing on the stage one time with The Temptations over Wake Forest, so he is an avid singer.
Didn't know we had a professional up here.
I thought, I thought Anna had the hardest job to come after Martin.
It's a hard act to follow.
Well, we'll go ahead and begin our, I guess, our other work for tonight, after we got the music part out of the way. We didn't realize we were going to have to perform too. We thought that was an observer status, but we learned differently. We, under the consent agenda, we do not have any administrative business tonight, but we have personnel items. We have item B, for those that have an agenda and following with us or looking on the screen. We have acceptance of resignations, retirements, rehires, terminations, and leaves of absence. Item C, the approval of classified personnel. Item D, the approval of licensed personnel. Item E, the approval of administrative appointments. And this includes one on the additional memo tonight, which is Grover Leinberger for Director for Primetime. Item F, approval of reinstated personnel has been tabled for further discussion. Or actually, that's not correct. It's, I think we did not have any with administrative transfers has been postponed until we discuss later after this meeting. So, Mr. Todd, I'll let you correct me now.
Dr. Cash, board members, Mr. Johnson, it is my pleasure to bring to you the Personnel Report. You have had the opportunity to review the Personnel Report as it has been given to you prior to the meeting. I'm here to answer any questions.
Have any questions or concerns for Mr. Todd regarding personnel?
I just want to reiterate for the audience, the Director of Primetime is a non-mandated position. Is that correct?
Could you clarify?
On state mandated.
Okay, so it is not mandated by the state.
And how many schools are they currently, is Primetime currently in? How many sites?
So, Primetime is an elementary school, after-school program. We have seventeen elementary schools. Of the seventeen elementary schools that we're currently serving, I'll have to get you that exact number. Sixteen out of the seventeen.
Sixteen sites. And how many, approximately, how many students are being served right now through?
I know we're serving over four hundred students system-wide. I stand corrected, it's a little over five hundred.
All right, thank you.
If you have no other discussion regarding the personnel items on here, thank you, Mr. Todd. I'll ask that we entertain a motion to approve the personnel portion of the consent agenda, as well as approve the minutes from November 2nd, Committee of the Whole, and November 9th, Board of Education meeting.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda down to E, with exception of transfers, and also the approval of the minutes from November 2nd and November 9th.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of this motion, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on into the recognition portion of our meeting tonight. We have the Community Schools Award, Ms. Susie Wahlberg.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Well, if any of you have not visited Twisted Oak Restaurant in downtown Statesville, you really must go. Opened just two years this month, it's quickly become the center of downtown, with the credit for that going to Andrea Chadwick and Jason Cole, the owners and proprietors. Andrea and Jason must have decided very early on that they wanted full involvement in our community. We had a theater production in the restaurant before they were really even open for business two years ago in December. They've hosted many events for our district in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, and you can always be assured of a very quality experience when you go to the Twisted Oak. To take their community engagement further, Twisted Oak has partnered with Maggie Schubridge, Edward Jones financial consultant, in her monthly recognitions of a volunteer in our school. Maggie has been doing this every month for a couple of years. Jason and Andrea provide a very generous gift card for one of our hard-working volunteers every month. And nothing says love like a gift certificate to Twisted Oak. So, we are very grateful to Twisted Oak and to Andrea and Jason, who are here tonight, for their commitment to our community and our schools and our volunteers. So, thank you, both of you. And if you would please come up front, Ms. Haines, I think, if you wouldn't mind, their certificate is right on the corner. And Maggie, will you come through? Now, I'm hoping Mr. Demansky made it. I kind of lost track. He's back in the corner. This one's also very special to me personally, too, just a little bit. Our district has had a very long history with Elmer's products. Prior to the acquisition of Hunt Manufacturing by Elmer's, the relationship was in place and thankfully continued after that transition. Hunt slash Elmer's has always been a strong supporter of our students and staff. The past few years, Elmer's has set a new benchmark for community partnership, as far as I can see. They have sponsored our youth leadership Iredell for more than five years with a $5,000 gift every year to pay for the expenses associated with this program. Elmer's was a major contributor when our district was invited to Washington DC for the art show at the Department of Education. Every year, they are asked to donate trifold board for science fairs. They do it. We have received pallets of four-by-eight sheets of foam board, which becomes sets for theater performances. The plant management has toured our schools, and Mr. Chris Demansky has served on our career advisory board and is a steadfast judge of science fairs. Mr. Demansky is our go-to guy at Elmer's. He's been incredibly generous with his time and reflects a personal and corporate consciousness that, if replicated universally, would make our planet more responsible and humane. Thank you, Mr. Demansky, and to Elmer's Products. So, Chris, if you would come up here, please, and maybe Mr. Gallion, would you bring the certificate and pose for a picture, please? Now that you're a famous singer.
Mr. Johnson, if you all and the audience forgive me for a second, I neglected to allow Mr. Johnson time to introduce our new Primetime Director, Mr. Leinberger. Would you like to make that introduction, Brady?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Cash. Is Grover here? Yeah, Grover, stand up so we can get a good look at you. No, sir. No, it's a deal, now. We are very excited about you being in our district. And folks, I'm looking at Mr. Leinberger's resume, and I'd like to share just a few things about his work history and education. Grover is a graduate of Livingston College in Salisbury, 1991, where he received his Bachelor of Science in Social Studies with teacher certification. He's also a graduate of Garden Web University in Bowling Springs with a Master's in School Administration and is currently a doctoral student with the University of Phoenix. Mr. Leinberger has a rich history of performance in the public schools. He has worked as a teacher, a coach, a principal. He has also worked as the Director of Facilities over in Hickory, for the Hickory Public Schools there. He has coordinated summer reading camps. He brings a wealth of experience and knowledge to our district, and we are very excited about you taking over our Primetime and leading that program for us. Welcome to our community, and we hope that you enjoy your stay with us, and we're very excited about you becoming a partner with us. Welcome.
Next, we'll move on with our recognitions and have the Energy United Bright Ideas Grant Award winners, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, Maureen is here from Energy United. And so, as she makes her way to the microphone, let me just say that we are very excited about the five teachers or teams that won Bright Idea Grants this year. And we would like to recognize the ones that could be here tonight. We're going to ask Mr. Kelly and Ms. Bonham to help with the certificates that are on the table there. And Maureen, we'll let you kick it off and tell us about Bright Ideas.
Great, well, good evening, Board of Directors and Superintendent Brady Johnson and community members and colleagues. I am Maureen Moore with Energy United. I do their communications and public relations. And one of the favorite things I get to do is oversee our Bright Ideas program. Raise your hand if you've heard about the Bright Ideas program. All right, terrific. Well, we have some outstanding educators in the room and five tonight that we're going to recognize, because we opened up this program to our nineteen-county service area across the state of North Carolina, and we had lots of applicants. And five of the winners were from right here in Iredell Statesville Schools, so we should be very, very proud of that. We chose forty-seven winners, so I'd like to have the ones that are here this evening, please, come up front. We had the opportunity to recognize these winners. We had some regional lunches back in November, and I'm very proud to say our winner of Iredell Statesville Schools was right at the Twisted Oak Restaurant, who hosted us and did a terrific job. And just a quick recap of their projects, which is behind me, I think, up on the screen. We'll begin with Adrian Bustle. And we're going to take a photo of each of the winners and then a group photo. So, Adrian is from North Iredell High School, and his project was the tin can robot assembly line. And as you can see up there, he was awarded just what he asked for, $269.90. And we can't wait to see that project come to life in his classroom, so congratulations to you. Our next winner, James Nelson. James Nelson's project was World Cup Intramurals. Just kind of get a vision of what's going on in that classroom with the funding he's going to get for his Bright Ideas. And we awarded him and his colleague $1,495 to implement that project in the classroom. So, congratulations to you, James. Our next winner was, we're going to skip down to Becky, Becky Radar, who is from East Iredell Middle School. And her project name is Global Education Challenge. And I invite you to go into their classrooms and see these Bright Ideas come to life. Becky and her colleague asked for $1,714, and that's what they were awarded for their Bright Idea. And let's see, Stacy here this evening. Stacy will just recognize anyhow for her Bright Idea. For reading, listening, and learning, $399 to bring that Bright Idea to life in the classroom. And last, our fifth winner from your school district, please come forward, is Tony Lully. Tony submitted a Bright Idea for his classroom and community at CCTL for the Community Classroom, Community Client Project. Now, not only did he get the, what was the dollar amount? $905 to make this Bright Idea come to life, but he also got another very special award, which I hadn't announced at the which I hadn't announced at the lunch because we didn't know the winner yet. But all these teachers that apply and win are put into a pool, and across the entire state, we review, a selection committee and myself reviewed all the winners, and one winner was chosen right here from your school district, Tony Lully, to be Energy United's statewide Tar Heel Teacher of the Week. So please join me in congratulating him. He will be proudly representing Iredell Statesville Schools and Energy United. He's invited to a basketball game. We partner on this with UNC Chapel Hill. We partner with NC State. So he's gonna be going with a person of his choice, a guest, to a basketball game in a statewide reception in January. And then the cool part is this, in February, he is going to be featured the week of February 9th at the UNC embossed-in-basketball game. We've already recorded a radio ad for him. He'll be on the radio all week long, and he'll be featured during halftime. So hopefully Suzie and team will put out an email to all of you, put it in your newspapers, your district newsletters, so you can all tune in, hear his name announced across the state. So you should be very, very proud of these outstanding teachers. So congratulations this year on behalf of Energy United to all of our outstanding teachers here in Iredell Statesville Schools. Thank you.
Next, we have the South Iredell High School volleyball team recognition. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask our athletic director, district athletic director, Richard Armstrong, to come to the microphone. I see Mr. Ivy here tonight. The coaches of this team, if you guys are there, please come to the microphone. What we would like to do, board members, is to call each of the members to the team. We do have certificates for these young ladies, and so Mr. Page, Mr. Gallion, if you guys could assist with the awarding of the certificates. And Mr. Armstrong, if you can get Mr. Ivy to help you out there, let's introduce each of these ladies along with their coaches.
I'm going to give up the mic to Mr. Ivy.
Good evening, Dr. Cash, board members, Mr. Johnson. We appreciate you guys taking the time to recognize our outstanding volleyball team. These guys did an outstanding job this year. We are just so impressed with their efforts and the time that they put in. They have really shown the spirit of South Iredell High School and shown that, the statement I like to say, that we are Viking Strong, so we are exceptionally proud of them. I'm gonna let Ms. Scobie tell us a little bit about the team before they come up.
Like he said, we really had, you know, it was a fantastic year. I appreciate you guys having us here, recognizing us. I really didn't have to do a lot with these players because they're just a very talented team, that all I really had to do was fix a couple things here and there, and they really did the rest. So it was pretty easy for me. It was a nice situation for me to walk into, being, this being my first year of teaching down here and coaching, so I really appreciate everything that I've had given to me this year. Do you want me to just call the individuals that are here up?
Yes.
I have Lizzie Thompson. Yeah, you guys can come up here, please. And Peters. Oh, she's not here tonight. Yeah, I can give it to her. Thank you. Anna Wagner. Caitlin Davis. Delaney O'Toole. Addie Deal. And Mackenzie Austin. So thank you again for having us here tonight. We really appreciate it.
And for those of you that may not know, our team is being recognized by MaxPreps as one of the top teams in the nation this Wednesday at school, so we're very excited about that as well. And another congratulations to the hard work of these young ladies and their parents and those of you that supported them. Thank you.
Way to go. Congratulations.
Well, we're transitioning, board members. I just wanna let you know that Coach Scobie, not only is a first-year teacher, she is a result of our out-of-state recruitment efforts that we had this summer with HR, so thank you for your support with that.
Next item on our agenda will be to recognize the 2015-16 newly-certified and recertified National Board Certified Teachers. Mr. Todd.
Well, Dr. Cash, board members, Mr. Johnson, again, it is my pleasure to be before you tonight in the community to bring forward a recognition that is very, very important to recognize in this day and age of exemplary teaching. It is my honor to present to you Iredell Statesville Schools newly-certified National Board Certified Teachers. This is a rigorous process that started for these teachers during the 2013-14 school year. Iredell Statesville Schools proudly support the National Board Certification process by recruiting and supporting candidates as they take their journey towards certification. You should know that certification is no longer a one-and-done, one-year-and-done process. They have revamped the process. That's why the dates look a little bit askew. They've revamped the process to take up to three years. Candidates are afforded that flexibility now. These candidates tonight were not afforded that flexibility. They were in on the version one, so to say. And so without any further ado, I'm gonna need some support in recognizing them. I do have certificates up there. Mr. James, would you mind helping out? And Mr. Johnson, would you mind helping out? So I sent out an invite to all involved this evening, and as we know, very busy time of the year, so most of them showed up tonight, and I'm very honored to bring before you our new candidates. Ms. Finan's not with us tonight. Right, okay. Ms. Dana Gillis? Yes. And Ms. Jane Hudson. Let's stay for a photo, and then I'd like to introduce the recertified folks. Great, thank you. It is also an honor to present Iredell Statesville Schools recertified National Board Certified Teachers. These were teachers who had National Board Certification, who were required to recertify, and it is an honor to bring them before you today. I'd like to start out by honoring Ms. Melissa Callaway. Okay. Mr. John Edge. I don't see Megan. Ms. Amy Lynch? No. Joan, Ms. Susan Pope? She's here. Mr. Douglas Sherrill. Ms. Candace Spear. Ms. Natalie Spencer. Ms. Stacy Martin. And Ms. Angie Webb. Okay, your recertified National Board Certified Teachers. Board members, as we're finishing up photos, I just wanna let you know, when they sign up for National Board Certification, we treat them as life without parole in Iredell Statesville Schools, meaning we do use them as exemplary mentors to other National Board Certified Teachers who are thinking about candidacy to help mentor them and lead them in the profession to exemplar teaching in the classroom. So I wanna thank you for recognizing them this evening.
Could we ask for a standing ovation for our National Board Certified Teachers?
That concludes the recognition portion of our meeting tonight. Again, congratulations to everyone for all the hard work and the rewards that you've seen. Move on to our non-consent agenda, and these are both voting items. I have item A, the approval of architectural contract for the North Iredell High School and South Iredell High School Arts Building. Mr. Jackson.
Yes, Dr. Cash, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, before you have a small copy of the architectural contract, I have forwarded that on to Mr. Cutay for his review and approval. This contract is a modified AIA contract written by Rod Malone from Tharrington Smith. They are one of the attorneys that we use on a lot of our legal matters, and it is more owner-friendly instead of architect-friendly. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about the contract.
Comments or questions for Mr. Jackson? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the contract as presented to us.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract as presented to us.
Second, Mr. Chairman. You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If you're not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, if that motion carries, thank you all.
Thanks, sir.
Next, we have the wide-area network contract extension. Dr. Bladner.
Dr. Cash, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, thank you. As presented at the Committee of the Hold, I have a contract extension for a wide-area network. This is advantageous to us because it'll keep our price low on the, on the network, and this is also part of the contract explained that it's paid for not by Iredell Statesville School dollars, but by federal E-rate money and from state connectivity fund, but it'll be good custodians of the tax dollars by lowering the cost.
Any comments or questions for Dr. Bladner? And this was presented last week at the Committee of the Hold. There are no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion that we approve this wide-area network contract extension as proposed.
I make...
Approve?
Yeah.
You have a motion, a second?
I'll second. I love that.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that motion carries, too. Thank you, Dr. Bladner. And now we come to the time for our public comment. We have four people who've signed to speak to the board tonight. Again, just as a reminder for those who are not generally present at these meetings, this is the time we allow the public members to speak to the board. We ask that you come forward as I call your name to the podium and state your name and the subject that you're speaking about, and then we'll ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and I'll ask Kelly McCary, our board secretary, to mark the time for us, and we'll listen to the comments. It's typical that we do not, as a board, respond back to your comments tonight, but we'll take your comments into consideration as we continue to do our business. So the first speaker tonight is Beth Pacman. Ms. Pacman?
I'm Beth Pacman, and I have been an actively-involved parent volunteer in the Iredell Statesville Schools for the last 11 years. I'm gonna move because you all can't see me around the light here. You may also recognize me from the bond referendum last fall. I was very actively involved with Our Schools First and getting the bonds passed. Okay? And you may recognize me because I sat through the entire Cal meeting last Monday night until I had to leave. I am here this evening to address a question that kept reoccurring in last week's Cal meeting, and that was, what is my role? What is my decision in this process? And I am here as an involved parent to address that question because you all are elected officials here to represent me and my children, and I want to share with you my expectations as a parent of you as the school board members. First of all, I want you to support your superintendent, not question or second-guess everything that he and his staff present in front of you. They are professionals. They are trained. They have spent many years, many of them with doctorates, learning their trade, and they work hard at what they do. In the last 11 years, I have seen miracles come out of these people where budgets get cut and they still bring a quality program to our children here in Iredell Statesville Schools. I would ask that you be innovative and that you fight the competition that is coming to this school district. I'm tired. I live in the southern end of the county, but my husband has a business up here in Statesville, okay? I'm tired of this north versus south and this petty politics that go on in this county. I want you to fight the conservatives in this town who think that what we have right now is good enough, okay? We need to keep working for our children and our schools. I challenge you to bring school choice to our children. I challenge you to spend time finding other innovative districts to model, and I challenge you to meet the needs because no two children are the same.
Thank you. The next speaker is Diane Hamby.
I am Diane Hamby. Both of you know me. The number-one thing I want in this community is good governance. I'm not real particular about who delivers it, but that's my number-one goal. The question was asked at the last meeting, what should be the role of board members? And like Beth, I'm gonna give you my opinion on that. Your job is to come to meetings prepared and most questions answered beforehand. Staff will gladly answer them or find you the answers. It is not to meet with just certain members of the board or those who did not get elected to undermine the administration while undermining the spirit of the open meetings law. Your job is to make sure through your policies that every child has a great educational opportunity. It is not to advance personal or political extreme agenda. Your job is to provide those programs that prepare our students to meet the challenges Your job is to provide those programs that prepare our students to meet the challenges of the 21st century. They will have to know things we never did, to provide the staff with support in a great workplace. It is not to send them to the past. You should not be the number-one whiner in the system. Your job is broad oversight. It is not to micromanage. It takes years of experience, hands-on, years of education to be a superintendent, hours and hours on the job experience. If you think you are more qualified, try applying for that job as a superintendent in another system. Your job is to be respectful to all staff. Anything less shows the public you are not up to the task you were elected to do. Your job is to provide common sense and good judgment. Your job is to make sure parents and students have great choices to meet the ever-changing world so they can continue to choose ISS, not to limit choices so they flee the system. Your job is to come to these meetings ready as a board member. It is not to keep fellow board members, staff, or the public here for endless hours while you grandstand. Lastly, and most important, if you do your job, no one should hear about it. Millions of us go to work every day and do our jobs, and the world turns because of it. Just do your job. Actions always speak louder than words. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bill Ballato.
My name's Bill Ballato. I'm a Realtor here in Iredelle County. I have a daughter graduated from Statesville High and a son in the IB program down at South Iredelle right now. And I just want to really thank you and the school system for the choices we do have in this county. We are seeing a resurgence in the values of all our homes throughout this county because programs like IB, VPAC, the Career Tech, the Early College are available to all in this county wherever they live because of the transportation available to the children. We are very competitive with the charter schools, both nonprofit and for-profit that are opening in the county because of those programs. And I wanted to tell you about a success story I just had. Diner Corporation, the parent company of Mercedes...